Good evening. Time being seven o'clock. I call the September 17th, 2025 meeting of the Franklin Town Council to order. Please pause for a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, announcements from the chair. All citizens are welcome to attend public meetings in person. To view the live meeting remotely, citizens are encouraged to watch the live stream on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel or the live broadcast on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29. Meetings are also archived by Franklin TV on the Franklin Town Hall TV YouTube channel and shown on repeat on Comcast Channel 9 and Verizon Channel 29 for those who miss the live meeting. To listen to the meeting remotely, citizens may call in using this number, 929-205-6099. This will not permit participation in the meeting. To participate in the meeting remotely, citizens are able to join a Zoom webinar using Zoom webinar ID 838-99191604. Then you need to hit the pound sign. Once again, the Zoom ID is 838-99191604. Any participants who wish to speak during the webinar must enter their full name and email address when joining the webinar. All participants will be automatically muted upon joining the webinar. In order to speak, participants who have entered full name and email address will need to select the raise hand function to request to be unmuted. All speakers will be required to state their full name and street address before commenting. Okay, tonight, Councilor Chandler will not be in attendance. He's dealing with some family health issues. We wish them speedy recovery. And Councilor Pellegrini is also under the weather, and we wish her a speedy recovery as well. Okay. Town Clerk, I remember what you promised.
I promise, I promise. It's gonna be quick. Just a quick update. Remember what you promised. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Councilmembers. Nancy D'Nello, your Town Clerk, and I'm here to update you and the residents of Franklin on the upcoming local biennial election to be held on November 4th at the Franklin High School from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. As of this past Monday, September 15th, which was the last day to return nomination papers, we officially have two races. We have eight candidates for school committee, which is a seven-member board. Five of the seven are incumbents. For town council, we have 15 candidates for a nine-member board. Six of the nine are incumbents. Board of Assessor, we have one candidate for reelection. Board of Health, there are no candidates. So if anyone is interested in doing a write-in campaign, call me and I'll explain what you have to do. Planning Board, we have two candidates for two seats. Planning Board Associate, we have one candidate for one seat. And Town Clerk, we have one candidate for reelection. If anyone is contemplating withdrawing, you must notify me in writing by Monday, September 22nd, by four o'clock. It's my plan to order the ballots on Tuesday, September 23rd, and as soon as the ballots arrive, we will begin the process of mailing out vote-by-mail requests. Now, remember, if you want a ballot, you have to request a ballot. So what that means is you have to complete a vote-by-mail application. You can find the application on my website or call me, email me, and I will gladly email you one. In-person early voting will begin Friday, October 17th, in the Town Clerk's office during regular business hours, and that's Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday between 8:00 and 4:00, Wednesday between 8:00 and 6:00, and then Friday between 8:00 and 1:00. We'll also be open on Saturday, October 25th, from 9:00 to 3:00 in the Clerk's office again for in-person early voting. This is also the last day to register to vote. So if you don't vote by mail, if you don't come in and early vote, I will see you all at the polls. Thank you. Quick enough?
Quick enough.
Perfect.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, further announcements from the chair. Dave Callahan, Chairman of the School Committee. I've asked him to come forward and give us a little update.
Thank you very much. I didn't promise to be quick.
That's okay.
But school is officially back in session and now in session with the reorganization that we've been talking about and working towards for the past two years. And if you kind of indulge me, it's been a long summer. I'll do a quick little recap for everybody. So again, the Franklin Public Schools have been working towards a transformative reorganization of their entire school operation, really rightsizing the district, bringing us down from 10 schools to seven, looking at just about every single system out there to optimize it, providing an amazing educational experience for our kids, and saving the taxpayers over $3 million annually. And this could not have been done. There was tremendous work from Superintendent Jagir, his entire office, a huge shout out to Director of Operations Collin. But also, it was a joint effort by the entire town of Franklin. We had DPW and facilities that were instrumental throughout the entire process. We also had, through the Community Preservation Act and through the council, a brand-new playground that was built over at Lincoln Street. And the schools had a big kind of kickoff right at the end of summer. I got to bring my little guy, and he tests, you know, he kicked the tires on that playground equipment, and it was fantastic. And because that Community Preservation Act, it was just, it's fantastic. It was such a huge win, and it's amazing we're able to kind of see that, you know, right there in front of us, where it actually kind of goes to. Now, the reorg, it certainly has some growing pains now, and some we'll continue to kind of see. Folks may have heard, first couple of days, there were definitely some traffic issues, some slowdowns with arrival and dismissal. But it was a big part of our last school committee meeting, and the Superintendent's Office really kind of fine-tuned the systems that they had, and as the teachers, the families, and the students better understood the procedures of arrival and dismissal, we saw those times dramatically kind of plummet, really kind of bringing us to, you know, what we were really expecting, and kind of more smoother operation. I know at one of the elementary schools, they saw they were able to kind of get over like 111 cars in and out in under 16 minutes. These folks, they're moving, and as long as everyone's kind of following the guidelines set forward, it's a safe and expedited system. But in everything else, really kind of bell-to-bell, things are going really well so far. From what we're hearing from the superintendent, the principals, the teachers, the families, and most importantly, the students, it's a great experience that they're having as we're moving forward with this reorganization. And again, there's going to be hiccups along the way. You know, we saw, you know, we started out, the schools had to, right out of the gate, it was $2 million in cuts, critical needs that we had to kind of face following the failed override. And that has an impact on every single one of our kids, as does the loss of over half of our school resource officers as well. These are real things that impact our kids and have ripples across their education from pre-K all the way up to high school. But everyone still is working together, taking, you know, playing the cards that we were dealt. And again, you know, huge credit to the entire Franklin Public School staff for providing just a great educational experience for these kiddos. And it's just a wonderful time that everybody is having, and I'm really looking forward to kind of seeing this reorganization as it fully kind of takes shape. We get to see that it's now open house season. And so tomorrow, my little guy gets to show me around Lincoln Street. I get to see that building for the first time, and I'm excited. And hopefully a lot of the parents and families are having that same excitement as they go and visit all the other schools as they have their open houses over the coming days and weeks. So again, as always, any kind of questions, just about everybody has my phone number at this point. Feel free to reach out, give me a call or a text, but I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Dave. Okay, next announcement from the chair is upcoming community events. Town Council will hold office hours tomorrow at the Senior Center starting at 8:30 a.m. The Police Department will host two more open houses for individuals to tour the police facility in Franklin on the following dates: Tuesday, September 23rd at 6:00 p.m. and Sunday, October 5th at 6:00 p.m. 2025 Ops and Culture Symposium will be held tomorrow, September 18th, and Friday, September 9th. This year's theme, Creative Econ, is in session, focuses on the intersection of creativity, economic development, and community building, and will bring together artists, creative entrepreneurs, municipal leaders, and small businesses. Franklin's Downtown Partnership, their annual Harvest Festival will be held on September 22nd, ah, 27th, sorry, 2025, from 12:00 to 5:00. The event will take place in the center of the cultural district right downtown. And lastly, Shero's Luncheon will be held on October 17th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Franklin Town Hall, 355 East Central Street, hosted by the E O V S Leadership Team and Franklin's Veterans Services. Come learn about the 2025 Women Veterans Advisory Report and the HERO Act. Please RSVP by October 13th by calling 508-613-1315. Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is Citizens' Comments. And citizens are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes on a matter that is not on the agenda. In compliance with General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, the Open Meeting Law, the council cannot engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during Citizens' Comments. The council may ask the town administrator to review the matter. Nothing herein shall prevent the town administrator from correcting a misstatement of fact during Citizens' Comments. Okay, is there any citizen in council chambers that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, is there anyone out there in Zoom land that would like to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Okay, next item on the agenda is Approval of Minutes. We have none this evening. Next item is Proclamations and Recognitions. We have the swearing-in of new police officers. Chief.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Yeah, great night for us. We're going to be introducing two officers that we've hired over the last several months. I just want to, I just want to make one thing clear, that these, these officers are replacements for one officer that resigned to transfer and follow his family to Florida eight months ago. And the second one is replacing Sergeant Campanelli, who retired. And if you were here two weeks ago or watched it, we recognized him for his lengthy service with the town. We ended fiscal year '25 with a budget of, you know, with 58 sworn in the complement and started July 1st for fiscal year '26 with a budget of complement of 56. So we haven't added anything. We're just bringing ourselves to, you know, we have brought ourselves to full staff at 56. We're there now. This is Officer Kyle Vaught. Kyle joined the Franklin Police Department after work in the past five years for the Portland, Maine Police Department with the Uniform Patrol Operations Division. Kyle received the Officer of the Month Award in both November 2021 and January 2022. Prior to the start of his law enforcement career, Kyle served with the United States Navy from March 2004 through December 2007. In May 2014, Officer Vaught enlisted in the United States Army and served for five years to include a rotational deployment to Korea in 2017, where he was assigned as the company armor and was a certified infantry squad leader. Kyle has a bachelor's degree in political science from Lemoine College. He started with the department in April, completed an abbreviated field training program due to his municipal law enforcement experience, and is currently assigned to the Operations Division. And I'm proud to say that in the short time that Kyle's been with us, I've had several citizens send me emails or go through our website to comment on the service that he's provided them. And the second officer is Jalen. It's my pleasure to introduce and welcome Officer Jalen Samuels to the Franklin Police Department. Many in the community may recognize Jalen, as he is a 2019 graduate of Franklin High School, where he excelled on the boys' varsity basketball team, receiving both Hockemock League and statewide recognition for his excellent play. Upon graduation from FHS, Jalen attended the University of St. Joseph in West Hartford, Connecticut. During his program, he participated in a three-month internship at the Clinton District Court, gaining experience in preparing criminal records for the judges, and was awarded the University of St. Joseph's Certificate of Excellence in Criminal and Restorative Justice in 2024. In 2024, Jalen received his bachelor's degree in criminal and restorative justice. Jalen attended the Municipal Police Training Committee's 35th Recruit Officer Class at the Boylston Police Academy, graduating on June 20th. Jalen started with the department on Monday, June 23rd. He is currently completing a 14-week field training program, and upon completion, will join the Operations Division in mid-October. And now I'll ask Town Clerk.
Congratulations. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me if you would. I, Kyle Vaught. I, Jalen Samuels. Do solemnly swear. To faithfully execute the duties. As a police officer. For the town of Franklin. With respect. Integrity. And excellence. And to uphold the mission of the department. The Constitution of the United States of America. The state of Massachusetts. And the laws and ordinances. Of the town of Franklin. So help me God. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to invite Kyle's wife, Megan, and Jalen's mother, Taish, to come up and do the penning.
Come on up. Come on.
Do you want to put it on, Debbie?
Okay.
[laughing]
That was great.
Thanks, Lynn.
Good.
Jalen, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Shake like. Careful shaking your head, but I want to.
The chairman, we're gonna head out.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, chief. Thanks, folks.
Come back anytime.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Appointments. First one is Community Preservation Committee. Wayne Samarian, Clerk, will read the appointment?
This, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two appointments here. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appointments, the town administrator has appointed the following individuals to serve on town committees with terms to become effective September 17th, 2025, and to expire as stated below. Name, street, address, and term to expire. The Community Preservation Committee, Mr. Wayne Samarian for the Recreation Advisory Board, address 204 Jordan Road, to expire on June 30th, 2026. Conservation Commission, Matthew Stoltz, to Haverstock Road on June 30th, 2028. This is a motion to ratify the appointments by the town administrator of the individuals named above to serve on town committees with terms to become effective September 17th, 2025, and to expire as stated above.
Motion and second discussion, Jamie.
I think I need to comment on Wayne. I think we all know how big of an advocate Wayne is. He's gonna get a plaque somewhere someday, I hope, for his incredible service to this town, and he continues to serve on CPA is a huge advocate, so it's great to have him back.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to appoint Wayne Samarian to the Community Preservation Committee.
Yes.
And Conservation Commission, Matthew Stoltz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you, guys, for giving of your time and continuing to help to work for our community.
Yes, thank you very much.
So, next item on the agenda is Public Hearings. And as you've seen on the agenda, there's a multitude, but we're gonna do them in two lots. The first public hearing will be zoning bylaw amendment 25-938 residential commercial kitchens and zoning bylaw amendment 25-939 residential commercial kitchens. First one is to amend Chapter zoning bylaw at Chapter 185, Section 3 of the Code of the Town of Franklin. And the other is to amend the Franklin Code at Chapter 185, Attachment 8, Use Regulations, Part 7, Accessory Uses. I would declare those two public hearings open. Where it is a public hearing, I will go to the council chambers first. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on either of these zoning bylaw amendments? Is there anyone out there in Zone Land that would like to speak on either of these two zoning bylaw amendments? I don't see anybody. Do you? Okay, I'll go to the council. Any councilors, any comments or questions?
Can I explain this?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the chair, this is about allowing people to be able to use their residential kitchen for commercial uses if they're on a septic. So people, for cottage food industry, it's kind of a step in the economic development of innovation and to get people into a commercial kitchen and then maybe into their own brick and mortar. It's the very first step of this whole process. And we talked about this before, went to the planning board, the planning board approved it, and so it's back to us.
Thank you, Councilor Hamlin. Any other questions or comments from the council? Jamie, Jamie, anything to add?
No, the only, no.
It's a good move.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I will declare the public hearings on zoning bylaw amendment 25-938 and zoning bylaw amendment 25-939 closed. We'll move to legislation for action, and we'll do, let's see, H.
H.
Zoning bylaw amendment 25-938 residential commercial kitchens, a zoning bylaw to amend Chapter 185, Section 3 of the Code of the Town of Franklin. This is the first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Sure. I can find it. All right. I didn't know where you were going to get that.
All right. Zoning bylaw amendment 25-938, this is changes to subsections 185-3 definitions. Residential commercial kitchens definition, a zoning bylaw to amend Chapter 185, Section 3 of the Code of the Town of Franklin. Being acted by the Franklin Town Council, that Chapter 185 of the Code of the Town of Franklin hereby amended at Section 185-3 definitions by adding the following text in proper alphabetical order. Residential kitchen, a residential commercial kitchen spaced primarily for parent cooking and producing foods, for off-premise consumption during door sales, the residential commercial kitchens is a lot, is.
the Franklin Town Code at chapter 185, attachment 8, use regulations, schedule part 7, accessory uses. This is the first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is bylaw amendment 25-939, a zoning bylaw to amend the Franklin Town Code at chapter 185, attachment 8, use regulation schedules, part 7, accessory uses, to be enacted by the Franklin Town Council, that chapter 185 of the Code of the Town of Franklin hereby amended at section 185-3 definitions by adding the following text in proper alphabetical order. Residential kitchen, a residential commercial kitchen spaced primarily for parent cooking and producing foods, for off-premise consumption during door sales, the residential commercial kitchens is an allowed use in the unit if serviced by an off-site subsurface sewage disposal system, aka septic tank, connection to public sewer town is prohibited. The foregoing zoning bylaw amendment shall take effect in accordance with the Franklin Home Rule Charter and Massachusetts General Act, Chapter 48, Section 5.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-939 to a second reading. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment 25-939 residential commercial kitchens, a zoning bylaw to amend the Franklin Town Code at chapter 185, attachment 8, use regulations, schedule part 7, accessory uses. This is the first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is bylaw amendment 25-939, a zoning bylaw to amend the Franklin Town Code at chapter 185, attachment 8, use regulation schedules, part 7, accessory uses, to be enacted by the Franklin Town Council, that chapter 185 of the Code of the Town of Franklin is hereby amended by the following additions to section 185, attachment 8, the use regulation schedule, part 7, accessory uses. Now, on the next page, under 185, attachment 8, uses schedule, part 7, the addition under A1, I'm sorry, A3A, residential commercial kitchens to be added in to the use table with one note at the bottom saying limitations of this definition is noted in 185 sections, section 3. The foregoing zoning bylaw amendment shall take effect in accordance with the Franklin Home Rule Charter and Massachusetts General Act, Chapter 48, Section 5.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-939 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, Jamie, anything to add?
Just really quickly for the folks watching at home, this is just altering the use table as Councilor Jones said in section A3. Just to be clear, so people don't, there are some restrictions on this. Councilor Hamlin mentioned that a minute ago. This is for people in any residential district as long as they're on private septic and they're not on public sewer. So this bylaw that you're amending now explains that and has a restriction in there. I just want to make sure people, for the record, know that this can't be on public sewer. It has to be a personal property that is in a residential district that is on their own private septic. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move zoning bylaw amendment 25-939 to a second reading, majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Okay, we'll back up to public hearings. And the next series of, Councilor Frangello will recuse himself from these public hearings and then on the legislation as well. So on the, on the next group of public hearings, where I'm going to open all of them at the same time so that there's, so pardon me if I get lengthy reading all of them because I do have to do that. So the first one is zoning bylaw amendment 25-929, creation of the Crossing Neighborhood Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the Code of the Town of Franklin at chapter 185, section 4, districts enumerated. Also zoning bylaw 25-930, zoning map changes Crossing Neighborhood Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the Code of the Town of Franklin at chapter 185, section 5, zoning map. And zoning bylaw amendment 25-931, the Crossing Zoning Use Regulations, a zoning bylaw amendment to the Code of the Town of Franklin at chapter 185, use regulation schedule, part 1 through part 7. Also zoning bylaw amendment 25-932, the Crossing Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the Code of the Town of Franklin at chapter 185, schedule of lot, area, frontage, yard and height requirements. Also zoning bylaw amendment 25-933, Crossing Neighborhood Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the Code of the Town of Franklin at chapter 185, section 21, parking, loading and driveway requirements. And lastly, zoning bylaw amendment 25-934, Crossing Neighborhood Crossing District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the Code of the Town of Franklin at chapter 185, sections 3, 4, 20 and 31. I will declare all of those public hearings open.
Take a deep breath.
Okay, so as this is a public hearing, I will go to the public first. Is there anyone in council chambers that would like to speak on any of these zoning Okay, is there anyone out there in zoneland that would like to speak on any of these zoning bylaw amendments? I don't see anybody. Do you, Amy? Okay, I'll move to the council. Councilor Hamlin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the chair. This, all of these bylaws create this area at the railroad crossing down on Union Street and near Cottage Street, not that area. It adds a few, few more pieces of property on there and also it, we've wanted to make it a sort of walkable, a walkable district where people can, sort of a mini downtown district. And so it has a height requirement, restriction on it, but it allows for all the uses in the size of the lot that fits the downtown commercial. That's really where we're at right now. I think the planning board isn't, has some good suggestions for use change, for changing, amending some of the use table that I think we will get to when they're finished with it, but if it doesn't go through that way, then what we have is really good. So, but we might have to amend it the second reading. That's kind of what I want people to know.
I was going to get to that when we get to legislation.
Oh, okay.
We're in public hearing. Any further discussion, comments? Jamie, anything to add?
To Councilor Hamlin's point, one, just so folks know, there is a definition in here. This used to be called commercial one, which nobody understands because it's zoning talk. I think calling it the crossing neighborhood, which is what it's historically been, will give it some value and some visibility, which is really good. Also, I think we'll all speak later, if not already, about the amazing event at the Children's Museum today and just how with the SNET trail being purchased and a lot of the other activity down there, it's really a perfect time to get this settled away. I do also want to point out that this does set in a height requirement at three stories. So unlike downtown commercial, there is no option for a special permit on a fourth or fifth story that is intended to keep that character of that neighborhood, which right now is at a three-story level, which is very good. So if people care about density or they don't like density, this is actually something in the positive. And as Councilor Hamlin mentioned, this does change the dimensional requirements akin to the downtown commercial district, which is something the planning board also wanted to do. So I don't expect a tremendous amount of changes from the planning board other than maybe some of the use tables, but with everything going on down at the Crossing Neighborhood and all the activity and great amenities that are being added down there, this is the perfect time to have the zoning clarity in the zoning district done. It'll really, we're speaking about this at the downtown partnership last week, and with Rep. Roy and I talking about the efforts down there, I could definitely feel a lot of excitement in the room, and there were a lot of people saying, hey, maybe that's the place to buy property. Maybe we should go down there because the next five years, when that trail gets done and now with the Children's Museum opening today and 305 Union is going to be redeveloped into housing in that old mill, that restoration, that character, this is really a place-to-be kind of thing, and I think the work that we're all doing and all of you are doing in the planning board on this will really change that neighborhood for a long time and keep that character that's there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Seeing no further questions or comments, I will declare the public hearings closed. And we'll move to legislation for action and I think we'll go right down, we'll go right down the list from A right through.
Okay.
Make it easier on me, you're...
Well, that's in order now, so, thank you.
And just so everybody is aware, normally, the normal process is that would go to the, all those zoning bylaws would go to the planning board, the planning board would then come back to the council with their comments, and then we would go through the two readings. Because of the planning board's schedule and the council's schedule between now and the beginning of November, I felt strongly that this council, who had done all, a lot of work in getting this together, needed to be the group that voted on this. So I spoke with the chairman of the planning board and I told him that, or asked him if he would be okay if we did the first reading. They have a meeting in between before our next meeting, and they will come back to us with their comments in between. He thought they would be minimal anyway, so we could make any adjustments that they might recommend that we were in favor of. We could make those adjustments during the second reading before we voted. So I did communicate with the planning board so that they were aware as to why this was on before they saw. Okay, so now we're just going to go right through the legislation from the very beginning. Resolution 25-58, November 4th, 2025, election, early in mail-in voting. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-58, authorization of early in-person voting for November 4th, 2025 biennial local election. Now therefore be resolved that pursuant to chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022, also known as the Votes Act, the town of Franklin acting by and through its town council hereby authorizes early in-person voting for the November 4th, 2025 biennial election as follows. Early in-person voting for the November 4th, 2025 biennial local election will take place during normal business hours, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Wednesday, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. in the Franklin Town Clerk's office located on the first floor of the Franklin Municipal Building at, located 355 East Central Street, Franklin, Mass. 02038 on the 17th, 20th, 21st, 22nd, 23rd, 24th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th and 31st of October, 2025, and from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. on Saturday, October 25th, 2025. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-58.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion.
Should we get Kobe?
Oh, Kobe.
I was going to say, I was, I just texted him to say he could come back. We could go get him.
He's coming.
Okay, you got it.
Sorry, we, yep, you're good.
For now.
Well, no, we're doing resolutions.
You might have to leave again.
You just have to step up.
You'll have to leave again.
So this is Resolution 25-58, election, early in mail-in voting. The vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-58, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Resolution 25-50, bye Nancy.
Have a good night.
Resolution 25-59, authorization for intermunicipal agreement with Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical High School for Franklin to provide it with a school resource officer. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-59, authorization of the intermunicipal agreement with Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical High School for Franklin to provide it with a school resource officer, whereas Tri-County Regional Vocational Technical High School, thereby known as the school, is in need of a police officer to perform the services of a school resource officer. And whereas the town of Franklin, the town currently employs a police officer who performs the services of the school resource officer for the town, and town is willing to make said person available to school to perform said services for school is in consideration for school's payment of compensation to the town, and whereas the proposed agreement, arrangement, which will be the subject of a written intermunicipal agreement between the town and school, a draft copy of which is attached, hit to as exhibit one, would benefit both governmental, governmental entities, and whereas an intermunicipal agreement is governed by the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A, which requires that each governmental entity authorizes this agreement. Now, therefore be resolved that the town council of the town of Franklin hereby authorizes the town administrator pursuant to General Law, Chapter 40, Section 4A, to negotiate and execute an intermunicipal agreement with Tri-County Vocational Technical High School in substantially the form attached to it, to as exhibit one, which agreement will provide for town to provide the Franklin police officer to the, to school to provide services as the school resource officer and for town to receive compensation therefore, provided that said agreement may contain such other terms and conditions as the town administrator determines to be in the town's best interest. This resolution shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-59.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion, Jamie.
Yeah, this, through Mr. Chairman, so this just extends out, I know it's confusing because it looks like 26, but our chief is so well-prepared, he's nine months ahead of schedule. And so this is reratifying the extension of the agreement that we have with Tri-County through 2029.
Questions? Councilor Cormier-Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Jamie, is, I know this is a renewal of a existing contract, which is great. Is something like this possible going forward, maybe as we look at future budgets, to do with the Franklin Public Schools for the two resource officers of the high school?
I would be more than thrilled if the Franklin Public Schools contributed money from their budget to the police department to hire back the SROs, because Tri-County pays for a big portion of this officer. So we could, it would just be easier if we just funded the two officers outright, but if there was some sort of agreement that we could make with the school committee that this was something we could fund in the future, happy to do it. I don't think we needed MOU because it's just within the budget, but, but you'd have to, you know, Tri-County's paying for this, right? So if the schools wanted to pay for it, I'd be happy to do it.
Yeah, no, I understand Tri-County's contributing and the municipality's contributing. I just think where we've heard, not just from, from the public but from the students, how much those SROs are missed at the high school, it might be a creative solution for going forward.
Absolutely, and we had teachers in the summer that came out, you know, that were on the bargaining unit too, that advocated for it. I would be, I think I'd speak to the chief too. I think we'd both be elated if there could be some sort of partnership with them, absolutely.
So let's keep that on the discussion table.
Definitely.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier-Ledger. Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve, let's see, Resolution 25-938, Zoning Map Changes, Crossing Neighborhood Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve, let's see, Resolution 25-59. Majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 25-61. Acceptance of easements on property on northwesterly side of Raymond Street. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-61. Acceptance of easements on property on northwesterly side of Raymond Avenue. Whereas 5759 Raymond Street LLC is the owner of a certain parcel of land located at northwesterly side of Raymond Avenue, Franklin. Described indeed dated January 7th, 2025 and registered Norfolk County Registry District of Land Court as Land Court Document Number 1,547,730 on certificate title number 212931. And whereas 5759 Raymond Street LLC having agreed to grant the Town of Franklin permanent vehicular traffic turnaround and drainage easements over, under, and through that portion of the grantor's land shown on Lot 172, formerly Lot 169, on a plan of land entitled Franklin Condominium 2 Modification Plan of registered land in the Town of Franklin, Norfolk County, Massachusetts and recorded with the Norfolk County Registry District of the Land Court as Plan Number 2984R filed with certificate title number 211825 in Book Number 1060. Said easements being shown on said plan as being located on the southeastally side of said Lot 172. Abutting Raymond Avenue and also shown on easement detail included on said plan. The area encompassed by said easements being 1,924 square feet and 1,190 square feet respectively, more or less according to said plan. Executed the grant of motor vehicle turnaround and drainage easements to the Town of Franklin for a nominal consideration on September, is this gonna be a true copy as of today?
No, we've got it, it's, what was the date, Friday?
Monday.
Monday, which Monday?
Did I note Monday?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth? Oh, this past Monday?
Yes.
Okay. September 15th, 2025. A true copy of said grant of motor vehicle turnaround and drainage easements being attached thereto as Exhibit 1. Now therefore be it ordered that the Town of Franklin acting by and through its town council accepts a grant of motor vehicle turnaround and drainage easements, a true copy of which is attached thereto as Exhibit 1. Is further ordered that a true copy of this resolution, together with the original grant of easements, to be recorded at Norfolk County Registry District of Land Courts. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-61.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
Not much. Councilor Jones kind of just read it all and the town engineer's here tonight for the various easements and water sewer extensions, if anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-61. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 25-62. Acceptance of access easement on Lot 1 located on westerly side of Spring Street. Clerk will read the resolution.
Chairman?
Yes.
I'm just being proactive. This is brought in at the last minute. There's a blank date there as well, but it should actually be September 8th, not August blank. Midway through.
September 8th on, on?
Oh, yeah.
Resolution 2562?
Correct. On sentence, second paragraph.
Last, oh, where it says September 11th?
No, it says August blank.
Oh, to the 8th?
September 8th. Resolution 2562.
Gotcha, September 8th? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-62. Acceptance of access easements on Lot Number 1 located at westerly side of Spring Street. Whereas Lewis Street Realty LLC is the owner of a certain parcel of land shown at Lot Number 1 on plan entitled Plan of Land 60 Spring Street, Franklin, Massachusetts, owned by Lewis Street Realty LLC. Scale 1 inches, 40 inches, drawn by GW Site Solutions dated March 12th, 2020. Revised on September 11th, 2024 and filed with the Norfolk County Registry Deeds in Plan Book 732 at page 87. And whereas Lewis Street Realty LLC having agreed to grant the Town of Franklin a permanent access easement shown as proposed access and grading easements A, which is equal to 3,331 square feet plus or minus, located on the northeast of the corner of said Lot Number 1 abutting Spring Street. All as, all as shown on said plan of land. Executed the grant of access easements on Spring Street to the Town of Franklin for a nominal consideration on September 8th, 2025. A true copy of said grant of access easement being attached thereto as Exhibit 1. Now, therefore be it ordered that the Town of Franklin acting by and through its town council hereby accepts a grant of access easements, a true copy which is attached thereto as Exhibit 1. And it is further ordered that a true copy of this resolution, together with the original grant of easement, be recorded at the Norfolk County Registry Deeds. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-62.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion, Jamie?
We need the easement for the roadwork that needs to happen at the top of Spring Street. And as you may remember, just for the record, Spring Street is a public way. It cannot be decommissioned. And I know when you drive up there, it doesn't seem like it's a public way, but it is a public way and it has been a public way in Massachusetts for almost 200 years, as Julie Jacobson researched for us. So, we need the easement so that they can finish the project and we can do the road correctly through the, through the town.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-62. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll now go to the last resolution. Resolution 25-60, acceptance of gifts. Senior Center $150. Clerk will read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Resolution 25-60, acceptance of gifts for the senior center. Whereas the Franklin Senior Center has received generous donations in a total amount of $150 to be used at the discretion of the department as follows. Donation summary. Senior Center $150 donations to be used at the discretion of the senior center through the Council on Agent Gift Fund to provide services and programs to senior citizens in the Franklin community. Donor information is included in the September 17th, 2025 Town Council Agenda Meeting Packet. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Franklin on behalf of Franklin Senior Center gratefully accepts these generous donations to be used at the discretion of the department for the purposes noted above. This resolution should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move Resolution 25-60.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, obviously, just once again, thank you to all the individuals, businesses, corporations that continue to donate to our senior center, our veterans agency, our police and fire, all of the different departments within the town. We thank you for your generosity. Any further discussion? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to approve Resolution 25-60. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there one zoning bylaw amendment that is not part of the?
No.
Yeah, this is sewer.
Symphony Drive.
And the.
Okay, bylaw amendment.
Collection container.
Bylaw Amendment 25-944. A bylaw to amend the code of the Town of Franklin at Chapter 179, Section 179-9.1. Water system map, Symphony Drive. This is a first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is bylaw amendment 25-944. Amendment to the water system map. A bylaw to amend the code of Town of Franklin at Chapter 179, Sections 179-9.1. Water system map being acted by the Franklin Town Council at Chapter 179, Section 179, 179-9.1 of the code of Town of Franklin entitled Water Sewer System Map. Exhibit A map being amended by adding as an eligible location for the following. Section 179-9.1, water system map. Exhibit A. Extending water main to provide town water service to a two-lot subdivision proposed for future construction on parcel 218-020-000 on Symphony Drive. The proposed extension will require installation of two new services to be tapped off the end of the existing main. This bylaw amendment shall not become effective until all the conditions agreed to between the property owner and the Franklin Department of Public Works are satisfied. This bylaw amendment shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter. This is moved to a second reading.
Move bylaw amendment 25-944 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
Through water map extensions before, this is just extending the water, the water map and the previous resolution is for the sewer. So, if anybody has any questions, Mike's here to answer anything.
Okay, any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move bylaw amendment 25-944 to a second reading. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bylaw Amendment 25-945.
You're gonna go back to 943.
You're gonna go back to 3.
Oh, that's the sewer, that's the sewer.
That's the sewer.
Bylaw Amendment 25-943. A bylaw to amend the code of the Town of Franklin at Chapter 139, Section 139-14, sewer system map, Symphony Drive. Again, this is a first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is bylaw amendment 25-943. Amendment sewer system map. A bylaw to amend the code of Town of Franklin at Chapter 139, Section 139-14, sewer system map. Being acted by the Franklin Town Council at Chapter 139, Sections 139-14 of the code of Town of Franklin entitled Sewer System Map. Exhibit A map being amended by adding an eligible location to the following. This 139-14 sewer system map, Exhibit A. Extending sewer system to provide town sewer service to a two-lot subdivision proposed for future construction on parcels 218-020-000 on Symphony Drive. The proposed extension will extend the existing sewer main by approximately 200 feet of new PVC sewer main and will require the installation of a new sewer manhole. This bylaw amendment shall not become effective until all conditions agreed to between the property owner and the Franklin Department of Public Works are satisfied. This bylaw amendment should become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move bylaw amendment 25-943 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
This is the sewer proportion of Symphony System.
Any questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move bylaw amendment 25-943 to a second reading. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, bylaw amendment 25-945. A bylaw to amend the code of the Town of Franklin at Chapter 65. Collection containers, first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bylaw Amendment 25-945. A bylaw to amend the code of Town of Franklin at Chapter 65, collection containers. Being acted by the Franklin Town Council that the code of Town of Franklin is hereby amended at Chapter 65, collection containers as follows. Section 65-2, definitions. Add a new definition in appropriate alphabetical order. Nonprofit organization is a duly organized and existing local Franklin civic, fraternal and veterans organization established pursuant to General Law, Chapter 180, Massachusetts, enabling legislation. Section 65-5, permitted locations. Add a subsection E. A E, a local Franklin nonprofit organization may place and maintain a single collection container on its property. This bylaw amendment shall become effective according to the provisions of the Town of Franklin Home Rule Charter.
Move bylaw amendment 25-945 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, Jamie?
So through, Mr. Chairman, this came through us, the request of some of the veteran organizations in town. And we do apologize for kind of, on the delay in this. We had, I think everybody understands, we had a very busy spring. And, but I did touch base with Ernest, who's here tonight, a few months ago. I give a lot of credit to our building commissioner, Gus Brown, and our town attorney over here, Mr. Sorrell, who came up with an innovative way to solve this issue, but also not allowing this to get out of control. So as you may know, in our community, those, and I'll just reference them as like the Planet Aid clothing bins. We have not allowed those in our town bylaws of use for many, many years. And as you can imagine, many, many moons ago, it was kind of a unsightly thing where the community kind of rose up and said, you know, we don't want these anymore because they get out of control and people dump stuff. But as fortunes may have it, the town attorney came up with a very good language which allows civic fraternal and veterans organizations established under MGL Chapter 180 to have that single, to have that single container. For the veterans groups, and they may speak to this, they actually see this as a way to be able to raise some money for the organization. Some other groups may in town as well. We're limiting them or proposing to limit them to one container. Because once you, a second container that's overflow is not a container. That's a different structure. It's overflow. But what we also don't want is to start a trend where overflow becomes the norm because then overflow, overflow, overflow becomes the norm. And then we go back to the problem the town fixed 20, 25, or 30, whatever it was, years ago. So this is a nice, healthy balance, a nice compromise where they're gonna be able to contract with a vendor to be able to raise some revenue for the organization. This will also allow some other civic organizations in town, if they have the space and they're able to do this. And this entire chapter, as usual, will be enforced by the building commissioner. And just again, thanks to all the staff for creatively putting our heads together for probably four, five, or six months of tech review to try to figure out a way to have a compromise where we could allow them to do it, but also not create a new problem that years ago was out of control. So, Ernest is here tonight. I know the building commissioner's here tonight. Our illustrious attorney's with us tonight. If anybody has any questions, everybody's here.
Thank you, Jamie. Questions from the council? Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Scott, I want to know this wasn't ignored. This was definitely taken under some serious consideration, especially my brain self. But like bureaucracy, sometimes things take longer than we hoped they would. But Jamie and the rest of the crew, I want to thank you for making this come to fruition. Because anything that this council can do to the best of our abilities, we've done it in the past and will do it in the future to support the veterans is an absolute must. This is a small thing and I, again, apologize it took for as long as it did. But I'm glad to see this on our desk tonight and finally getting voted upon. Thank you to all involved in making this happen. And Mr. Carruthers, thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Councilor Jones. Councilor Cormier-Ledger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Jamie, just a clarifying thing. In your comments, you mentioned that these collection bins weren't allowed. But are we already giving exception to collection bins for other groups in town? Because I do know of several.
So, places of worship are, there's no restriction on them and from previous court decisions, so.
Okay.
Do you want to speak to this? Sorry?
So when we drafted this bylaw originally, there was a lot of time and effort. At that point, they were just coming into existence. It was like they came out of nowhere, led by Planet Aid. As was, as the administrators started to allude to, the courts recognized that the solicitation printed on these things came under the First Amendment. So there was some kind of protection. We looked at regulating them strictly on the basis of what they, their purpose and abuse and that sort of, a reasonable time and place regulation. We drafted it very strictly as to where they could go, just as. We drafted it very strictly as to where they could go just as a rental component of a property owner's property, as generally industrial area. We then created exceptions for specified groups for very limited purposes. So churches and charities, 501(c)(3) charities, were allowed to have containers for their own purposes. So like the Catholic Church with St. Vincent de Paul, or if the Salvation Army or Goodwill Industries were in town, they would be able to have. The VFW did not qualify, one, because they're not a 501(c)(3), and two, because it wasn't within that restriction of their own purposes. They were basically going to get rental income from having somebody bring it in. So we addressed the VFW and as we were doing that, I said, are there other groups that it makes sense to be proactive? The Alex is right across the street from the VFW. You have to, they're more or less in the same position. So we very carefully crafted it to allow, but I view as a relatively narrow exception, it's a balancing that Jamie alluded to earlier.
Okay, thank you. And Scott, I know you're in the audience. Are you happy with the proposed language change that's in front of us? Because you brought this before us.
Yes. Yes, what we're looking for.
Okay, great. That's what I like to hear. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier-Ledger. Any other counselors? Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to thank the town staff for the compromise. I know it was a lot of work, but it's worth it. And that's what we do, right? So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Any other counselors? Again, I'll just piggyback on what Counselor Hamblin, Counselor Cormier-Ledger, and Jones have said. I appreciate the work that the administrative staff and our town attorney did in crafting the language that, in our view, works best for our community. So thank you for that. So seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to move bylaw amendment 25-945 to a second reading. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Counselor Fonge, oh, sorry.
Give me that again.
Don't go far. Now we'll go through the bylaws for the Crossing District. Zoning bylaw amendment 25-929, creation of the Crossing Neighborhood Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at chapter 185, section 4, districts enumerated. This is a first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is zoning bylaw amendment 25-929, creation of Crossing Neighborhood Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the code of town of Franklin at chapter 185, section 4, districts enumerated. Being enacted by the Franklin Town Council, that hereby, that chapter 185 of the code of town of Franklin is hereby amended by adding text at section 185-4, districts enumerated as follows. Add to the end of section 185-4a, a line stating Crossing Neighborhood, or CN. Add to the end of section 185-4c, a paragraph stating 16. The Crossing Neighborhood District, CN, is intended primarily as a diverse, mixed-use, economically and culturally rich district. A strong emphasis is placed on pedestrian-friendly design, encouraging a wide range of residential, commercial, cultural, and entertainment uses. Limited light industrial use may be permitted. Single-family, two-family, multifamily, and apartment residential uses are allowed. The foregoing zoning bylaw amendment shall take effect in accordance with the Franklin Home Rule Charter and Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40A, Section 5.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-929 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion, we had a public hearing on it, so I think we got through most of the discussion. So seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to move zoning bylaw amendment 25-929 to a second reading. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment 25-930, zoning map changes Crossing Neighborhood Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at chapter 185, section 5, zoning map. This is a first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is zoning bylaw amendment 25-930, zoning map changes Crossing Neighborhood Zoning Districts, zoning bylaw amendment to the code of town of Franklin in chapter 185, section 5, zoning map. Being enacted by
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor of waiving the reading signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-930 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move zoning bylaw amendment 25-930 to a second reading. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment 25-931, the Crossing Zoning Use Regulations, a zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at chapter 185, Use Regulation Schedule, Part 1 through Part 7. First reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is zoning bylaw amendment
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-931 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move zoning bylaw amendment 25-931 to a second reading. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And zoning bylaw amendment 25-932, the Crossing Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at chapter 185, Schedule of Lot Area, Frontage, Yard, and Height Requirements, first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-932 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. Again, we had the public hearing on these bylaws, so seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to move zoning bylaw amendment 25-932 to a second reading. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning bylaw amendment 25-933, Crossing Neighborhood Zoning District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at chapter 185, section 21, parking, loading, and driveway requirements, first reading. Clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-933 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing no further discussion, the vote will come on the motion to move zoning bylaw amendment 25-933 to a second reading. Again, a majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the last one. Zoning bylaw amendment 25-934, Crossing Neighborhood, Crossing District, a zoning bylaw amendment to the code of the town of Franklin at chapter 185, sections 3, 4, 20, and 31. So first reading, clerk will read the bylaw amendment.
Motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion and second to waive the reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move zoning bylaw amendment 25-934 to a second reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Seeing none, the vote will come on the motion to move zoning bylaw amendment 25-934 to a second reading. A majority votes required. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, one of the most important. A lot of legislation to get through.
It's good stuff, too.
Did somebody get Counselor Fonge, please? Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda, and I skipped over it, so I will apologize to our chief and deputy chief back there for jumping over them with all of the legislation. But we'll go to, excuse me. Presentation.
Presentation.
Solicitation permits. And the chief and deputy chief will walk us through solicitation permits. Welcome. And again, I apologize for jumping.
No problem.
He doesn't really, but.
Can I make a motion? We skipped the presentation.
All better.
Just joking. Happy to be here.
We're not doing that.
Okay.
Thank you for having us. Jim West, deputy chief of police. We'll start with a brief introduction while we're here. You might remember back in July, we had an issue with a solicitor in town going door to door.
Yeah.
Wasn't very pleasant to some residents. We got complaints. I think some of you got complaints. We ended up tracking them down. They did not have the proper permit. They were warned, ended up being fined, and they left town. So we handled that situation. But out of that situation, the town administrator asked us to do a brief presentation to go over our process for solicitors, what they are allowed to do, what they can't do, and to show the residents what they can look for and some things that they can do. So with that, things we'll cover today is review of the solicitor bylaws. We'll explain a permit process, give you some data, and some exemptions to the law. What you see here is the bylaw. This is actually, you see it's on our letterhead, so we give every solicitor that comes in and applies, we give them a copy of the bylaw verbatim from the town code, and we put it on our letterhead and it goes with the permit with them. So some highlights to the law on the right-hand side there, you'll see, first of all, permit is required. They apply on the website. I'll go through that process in a minute. The hours are 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. or half hour prior to sunset, whichever is earlier that they're allowed. Private property, if there's a sign that prohibits them, no trespassing or no soliciting, or if they're asked to leave, they have to leave. So it's prohibited on private property. ID and the permit has to be on them and displayed upon request, and if not, there's a $200 fine that goes with it. Okay. This is highlights of the bylaw. The permitting process, applicants will go on our website, they apply through our webpage. Every person who goes door to door from the company has to be listed on there. We ask for some information. The criminal background check is performed on every single person that wants to go door to door. Those with felonies or violent criminal history are denied. So there could be certain individuals, say they apply for 10 people. We could individually, you know, approve some and deny others depending on their criminal history. Once approved and the fee is paid, then we'll issue the permit. Again, the copy of the bylaw is included with that. If the fees are $100 for the first person and $20 for every additional person that applies on that permit. And again, every solicitor that goes door to door must carry the permit and an ID with them and show it upon demand. This is an example of the permit. It's on our letterhead, just so people can see what it looks like. Just to go through, on the top is the issue date. It's good for 120 days.
That was my question.
The second part is the name of the company or organization that it's issued to, the name of the contact person, so if there's any issues or any problems, they can, either the residents or we can contact that person directly. It's right on the permit with the phone number. The individuals, so all the people that are on that permit that are allowed to go door to door that we have vetted and approved are on that, on that permit. So if a resident asks to see their ID, the ID should match one of the names on the permit. If it doesn't, then they're not, they're not permitted properly. And then it's going to be signed by probably Officer Martini, who's our administrative officer. He handles our permit process, but it will be signed by an officer on the bottom. Just a few, some data, some stats from this year. So we have five current active permits. We had 11 total applications throughout the year. Seven were issued and four were never picked up. So we might go through the process, through the vetting, and they just, for whatever reason, they just don't come and pick them up. So not too many, it's manageable, but we have five active at the moment. Finally, some exemptions to the law. Attorney Sorrell, you correct me if I'm wrong, but First Amendment and master under law does have some exemptions. First, for religious and political purposes, they allow for them to go, to go door to door without a permit. And however, reasonable hours and private property prohibitions are still in effect. So if, you know, someone's going door to door, they're asked to leave, or if there's a sign, they still have to.
Do you want to have something to add there?
Yeah, I want to really emphasize, the United States Supreme Court weighed in on this about 20 years ago. You cannot even require that religious and political advocacy groups check in. That's viewed as chilling free speech. So they have carte blanche. The flip side of that is, as a private property owner, you have the right to determine who's on your property or not. So while we can't interfere, you either by posting your property, or if we create a do not call list, have, have the ability to do it that way. So they can't trespass. But we have, we're very limited under those circumstances unless and until something happens, unfortunately. It was, in my opinion, as liberal as I, like the thick I am, a rather poor decision in terms of not recognizing and balancing the public safety consideration.
Thank you, Mike. Continue, Justice.
No problem. That's pretty much it. I know it was a brief presentation. There's really not much to say about it. It's pretty cut and dry, the bylaw. We don't really have an issue. We haven't seen issue other than that one company who did not go through the process. We explain this all to people when they do go through the process, what they can, what they can't do, and they get a copy of the bylaw, so.
And if somebody were to have a solicitor come on site and have an issue, they should call?
Absolutely. Call us. We'll track them down. We'll give them a warning, and after that, it could be a bylaw violation or possibly criminal trespass depending on, depending on the issue.
Something to add, Mike?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up, but even on the commercial, the door to door, commercial speech is protected by the First Amendment to some degree. So you can have, but you can have reasonable time and place regulation, as has been alluded to. So that's one where we have some authority to control and regulate.
Thank you. I knew there were going to be a lot of questions here. Counselor Cormier-Ledger, we'll go right down the line.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, guys. I was one of the ones that asked you guys to be here tonight because of the complaints that we had received, so thank you for this. And I'm really pleased to hear about the query checks for the individuals that do the soliciting. My question is, having needed to do those many times with my nonprofit work, I know they can take a while, so how much in advance does a company have to give you that permit and those names in order for them to be queried and approved before the business can send the people out?
Unlike the query checks, you probably have to do ours instant. We can run them right through the
Oh, okay. Well, that's great to hear.
Yeah, so it doesn't take long. We're very accommodating to the companies. We understand they have a business to do. We'll run them as quick as we can. Usually, within a couple of days, they're approved.
So they can get a permit maybe a week in advance into you with those names, and then they can expect that they'll get those either approved or denied as a follow-up?
Yes.
Okay. And to, I guess, to the general public, again, if that company that's already been fined that, that left, if they were to come back, they
Probably be denied at this point. They would probably be denied at this point.
Okay, so you would just deny them, but if for some reason people felt concerned, they would just call?
Just call us, yeah. At least they'd be denied for this year, maybe next year we can reconsider. We did talk to management with that company as well. We followed up with them, and they were very apologetic, didn't realize it was a third-party company that they hired, just to give you a little background. And I, my guess is they would sever ties with that company.
Do you, my final question to you guys, we got a lot of concerns slash complaints, particularly from the elderly who happen to be perhaps home alone. So do you have safety advice or protocols that you could maybe just share with the public? Like, they're not obligated to, like, answer the door if they don't want to, or, you know, but I, maybe if you guys could just kind of go through that.
They're certainly not obligated to answer the door. If they wanted to answer the door and just say, "I'm not interested," they should leave right away. If they don't, just lock the door, call us right away. If you don't feel comfortable answering, leave the door locked. You can either try to tell them through the door, "I'm not interested," or don't say anything and they'll eventually leave. But feel free to call us, that's what we're here for.
Don't, if they don't leave, if you don't have a no solicitation, no trespassing sign or something, they ring your doorbell and you don't want to basically talk to them, don't talk to them. They're going to turn around and they're going to leave. If they try to get in, that's a little different, you know, then give us a call, but let them leave. And the ones that are permitted typically will call the MECC and tell them exactly who they are, the times that they're going to be out, and the streets they're going to be on. Because they know they might get a call, and then the MECC's able to instantly answer the resident and say, "That is a permitted individual that basically knocked on your door and you spoke to who's selling windows," or whatever else.
Okay. Great, great to hear. Thank you for the presentation, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Counselor. Call me Elijah. Counselor Delarco.
Thank you. The only question I got is, you can revoke that permit at any time.
Yes.
Right, so, you know, give them out 120 days, you can want, but if it gets, you just tell them, "Get out," right? That's it.
Correct. We revoke it, and again, we have the fines at our disposal.
Right.
If we wanted to.
I just want to make sure that you can, you know, you can revoke it at any time. That's all my concern, and, you know, if you do not feel safe, just call 911 right away, get those guys down there.
Thank you, Counselor Delarco. Any other counsel? Counselor Jones? I'll keep up.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many of the questions that needed asking have been asked, but I did have a couple of individuals with round plates on their car, for whatever reason, saw me get out of my car one day as I was going into my house, and they stopped to pull over to make a solicitation, obviously, once again, for solar panels, which seems to be a very popular thing to sell. And I'm like, boy, you guys pulled over to talk to the wrong person. I go, "Where's your permit?" "Oh, we have it in the car." "Great, go get it for me." They didn't have one. I'm like, "Have a nice day, I'm not talking to you." But would you obviously state the most logical thing for somebody to do, especially if they don't want to be disturbed from solicitors, is to simply put up a no solicitation slash no trespass sign on their house? That is a legal warning to anybody approaching their property that they don't want these people on their property, and if they do, it's a trespass. Am I correct?
Correct. I believe, and again, correctly, it's right in the bylaw that a signage is adequate.
So I would, so I would suggest to the public at large, for anybody who feels like they don't need solar panel people or people looking for Terminex, saying they've got bugs in their bushes, or we know there's bugs in their bushes, coming on their properties, to put up a sign that simply states, "No solicitation, no trespass," and that should be a fair warning to anybody. Great, thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your hard work and diligence on this matter.
Thank you, Counselor Jones. Counselor Hamblin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the chair. Thank you both for being here tonight. Sorry you had to wait through all the legislation for action, but it was good stuff, I'm sure you enjoyed it.
I'm calm.
I do have one extra question to add to what everyone else has asked. Is there a place on your website that has the list of the permitted people?
No.
Or, no?
No. No, we don't have, we don't publicize it. If somebody has a question, just call. We do keep a book up front, the front desk officer has a book with the current permits in there, so if there's a question on a person or a company, if you call, they'll look it up and say whether they're permitted or not.
Right.
And if they're not, we'll send somebody else.
If you have a question, like, is this real?
Right, just call.
Because there's so many scams out there, right? So, okay.
Absolutely.
All right, so call, just call.
Call, we'll look them up, they have it right at the front desk, and they'll be able to verify it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Any other counselors? Counselor Chairman?
Thank you. I'll, 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 charities, raising money for, is that, you have the advocate permit? I'm just curious.
I'm not sure, James.
My opinion has been that the political and religious exemption, as long as they're only advocating, they're exempt. But in my opinion, if they're soliciting monies, then they should be subject until somebody's, still somebody tells me otherwise. And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just, to fill it out, for those of you who are concerned about door to door sales, Massachusetts law recognizes that it can be a coercive situation and allows you to rescind a home sales contract, I think up to three days. There is a statutory provision on that.
Very rare that we've had charitable groups, and it's a different thing for that. Every parent-teacher organization in town, every other, they have to give something, they have to grab, they have to get the form from the clerks, they come to the station. I'm the one that has to basically go in and look at, you know, what they have from, you know, query and all that, and then sign it that they're of good moral character. Same thing with peddlers and hawkers, like your food truck people and so forth. So everybody's being pretty much vetted.
It feels like it used to happen more, like Greenpeace used to come around, but is that all? Yeah, but they were all politicals there.
We're not seeing, yeah.
I don't think, it seems like nobody's home anymore, so.
Nobody's answering the door.
Nobody's home, too, yeah.
And I just want to be clear that, like, what happened recently that basically caused all you to ask us to do this is, is not something that happens regularly. People do call to try to find out if somebody's permitted or not, and occasionally, there might be somebody that isn't, and we just basically tell them what the process is and they have to leave until they do it. But this particular, you know, there was a particular individual amongst this group that was a little aggressive and a little rude, which pretty much got on their, and they should have been upset about it. And when, once we were able to track them down, we issued a fine. It's very rare that we have to issue a fine. We tell them that they're either not doing the right thing, you need to, or you can't be in town, and they leave. So I just wanted to make that clear. It's not something that, you know, that was an anomaly.
Thanks, Chief. All set? Just to piggyback on something that Counselor Hamblin brought up, at the active permits, would there be a spot on your website that you could put the current active permits so that if somebody wanted to know, they could just click on it and see what permits were active? Just a question.
I would assume there'd be public information that we could publish, so I don't see why we couldn't do that. Sure.
We'll do our best to keep it up.
The issue is upkeep and.
That's it.
I get that.
Who's 120 days have expired, who's the new person, you know, blah, blah, blah. I mean, it is something we could definitely end up doing, it's just making, and again, I wouldn't trust it 100%. If somebody says they have it, they actually have, ask them for the permit, ask them for their ID. But, yeah, we could definitely do that. Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions from anybody in the audience? Council chambers? Zoom land? There's three out there, I think. Okay. Deputy Chief, once again.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Once again, I apologize.
You are the chairman, you can do what you want.
No, I have us all.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you guys, thank you.
Okay, Town Administrator's report. Mr. Howard.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm pleasantly shocked it's 8:40, this is great. So I do have a bunch of announcements, I did add a couple of items on there in case people had questions. First, tomorrow, you're going to get a water restriction notice, so all of Massachusetts is in a Level 2 drought. Franklin is technically not, but our neighbors are, and it's only inevitable in the next couple of weeks that all of Massachusetts will be in a Level 2 drought. Because of the lack of rain, and we are a 100% groundwater community, sourced community, we're taking the extra precaution to just set out some water restrictions, mainly during the daytime, especially while the fall is coming into order and people stop working on some of the landscaping on their yards. So there will be a notice about that tomorrow. If we don't get any rain soon, you can probably expect a Level 3 by the time we get to about Thanksgiving, but we still are a little away from that. And I would remind all of you that Franklin is literally, the citizens of this town have won awards on how low the water consumption is here. So this is not, I don't think, a big stretch for most families. In fact, I think most households and most families are already doing a really, really great job anyways. If folks have not driven downtown on 140, or if they don't live over where you do and live off Washington Street, please drive by your historic museum. Please drive by your other museum, former museum, down on Washington Street. The cupola is just about done, it looks fantastic. Habitat for Humanity is basically turning that house around day by day. What an amazing job they've already done on that house. I did, have gotten asked by a ton of people, I will work with Kim Thomas to try to have an open house or something so people can see the inside and the exterior before it's inhabited. But I just think, like, when we look back at some of the things that have happened in the last couple of years, these are two huge projects that deserve a lot of credit and just a lot of pride in the community. I do have a personnel update. I've got a bunch of stuff to walk through. First, because she's here with us tonight, Marina Zelaya is our new Director of Planning and Community Development. Marina, thank you so much. We are super excited, and no one is more excited than the people up here, because we've had to pick up a lot, and Gus, and with Brika Ly being out, we are extremely happy with Marina coming on to the, onto our staff, which comes to us with over a decade of experience in housing policy, both on the West Coast and also here, most recently in the city of Somerville. And also, she has a bachelor's in political science. And before people get cute with this, that, or the other thing, I just want to remind everybody, she lives in town, she's a resident here, she owns a home, so we have to be friendly, so don't, you know, once you hear Somerville, I don't want to hear chip shots at Somerville, but right now, we have somebody that lives in town. Well, I knew exactly where people were going. We are not bringing Somerville to Franklin, so don't worry about it. Well, you just voted on a bylaw that maxes that up, so we can reassure the residents that seven stories, eight stories, or whatever people rumored and whatever crazy stuff people say is not true. But in all sincerity, you know, she comes, moved here a couple of years ago, has a two-year-old son, has set roots in the family. We interviewed her, had already been familiar with Ms. Calley, already knows about the farmer's market, came with us today for the Children's Museum opening. I can already see that she's going to walk the halls with her family down at the New Children's Museum, so we're super excited to have her on staff. She formally starts on September 29th, so today was a little bit of an orientation, and then as she gets acclimated to the rest of the staff, we'll pick things up. So really, really excited. Also, in that same office, also really, really excited, I know the Conservation Commission is really excited, those of you who know our conservation agent, Brika Ly Goodlander, Brika Ly will be returning in about a month, about mid-October to the end of October. I just thank all of you on the council and the public. I know it's been six months. We also had one of our admins moved out west, so we had to replace Daniele with Melanie downstairs, not this Melanie, but another Melanie. She has fit in really well, too. And also, down in that office, we'll have a proper recognition at some point at another meeting, but I also want to announce before the next meeting, next council meeting, Maxine Kinheart will formally retire after over 30 years of service to the town of Franklin, so we'll have Maxine at the right time, but a huge round of applause for Maxine. Maxine has lived to tell the tale, so we all look forward to Maxine's book someday on 30 years in local government, including 20-something up in the Town Administrator's office, so I hope everybody's nice to Maxine, because you ever know, it might be in her book someday, but in all seriousness, like, this is a really big deal for all of us. I just thank the public, all of our volunteers on our boards and committees, obviously, the last six months since Brian retired and with all the other news, we're really excited, obviously, for Brika and her baby. You know, we're happy that she's had a great maternity leave, we can't wait for her to come back, but it's been a long transition. And I thank Mark and Amy and Gus and Kathy Liberty and Jenny and all the staff downstairs for just stepping in and being team players, you know, always picking up the phone, even if it wasn't their job, always answering a customer, always helping out, a butter notifications. We have a great staff downstairs, we've got great new additions to the staff, and I get chills because I just can't wait for a full team to be back downstairs in the permitting office. I'm not done yet. I also want to announce the retirement of Mike D'Angelo, our Facilities Director, who has formally retired as of about a couple of weeks ago. Again, another person who deserves, I don't need to speak for you, Mr. Chairman, I know at the right time, you'll have your own words, but we hope that Mike will be in soon to get his due. Many people don't, many people know Mike, many people don't know Mike, many residents who have moved here in the last couple of decades may have never seen him. But Mike D'Angelo has worked for us for over 30 years, we're going to miss him a lot. He has basically built every single building that is a public facility in this town, including every school. The only one he had not formally built or renovated was the police station, and we'll do something for him at some point to have him a part of that, he's already been a part of it. I certainly, if I'm around, I hope his name will go on that plaque someday as a contributor. But if you are one person who moved here because our school facilities, our high school, Kelly Sullivan, Horace Mann, Oak, all of those buildings, if you moved here for school buildings, you owe a huge debt of gratitude to Mike, obviously, the building committees as well, Mr. Chairman, but I know I speak for you. He's one of the best this state has ever had at building buildings, and we're going to miss him a lot. As a result, we formally have appointed, in working with the schools, and thank you to Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent, and all of you on the council for allowing Mike to have a Deputy Facilities Director, which has desperately been needed for many, many years. We have formally appointed Kevin Harn, his deputy, as the formal Facilities Director. We will be posting for Kevin's replacement soon, and I just want to remind everybody, when you're talking facilities, you know, 80 to 85% of their staff time and the money in that budget is really school-related, so it's critical to finish, to fill that position. While we're very happy for Mike to be retired, and we're very sad that he's gone, Kevin has done an absolutely outstanding job. And this year in particular, while Mike was having some health-related issues, in probably one of the hardest years with redistricting especially, I give a huge shout-out to Kevin and his work, and also, a huge shout-out to Colin for the school district, who has taken on additional responsibilities. Kevin and Colin have built a great professional relationship, and the Superintendent and I both are just really, really thrilled that the two of them have really taken on a tremendous amount of responsibility. Couple of other announcements, Caroline Ferris, who folks may have seen here earlier, one of our clinicians, sadly is leaving to take a position much closer to home in Cambridge, so we will be posting for the replacement of one of the clinicians. And last but by no means least, Amy Frigiletti. Tonight is technically her last meeting here at the council level. I don't know if you realize that, you may have, I don't know if you did. You did? Okay. Did you, were you guessing whether I remembered or not?
I think you did.
Yeah, right? No, you did. You know, I can't say enough about Amy's work here for three years. You know, I'm sad to see her go, I couldn't be more happier for her that she's getting married in a few weeks and relocating her life down to the Cape. So for those of you down in the Cape, you can always go to Yarmouth Port and check in with Amy and her soon-to-be husband. You know, I know a lot of people always ask me a lot of questions about what Amy does, not just sitting here during meetings, but I just want to recognize that the opioid master plan, with all the opioid settlement funds that Amy created and got all of you to approve, that's not just an opioid settlement plan. We got asked recently from the Attorney General, Andrea Campbell, is one of the two most innovative opioid settlement plans in the state with the city of Lynn. We just did a webinar to showcase to over 350 people on a webinar about the stuff that all of you supported, and with her skill and with everything that she's done, she did a fantastic job on that. Obviously, arts and cultural development, economic development in general, we all know about art pharmacy, again, that put Franklin on a plateau above many others, and Amy came forward with a lot of those ideas. Her work at FCAT, on the crisis intervention team, leading all of that is really... Her work at FCAT, on the crisis intervention team, leading all of that is really organized and formalized a tremendous amount of work throughout the community with homelessness and a variety of other issues that we've all been hearing about. And just from our standpoint internally, she's one of the best writers that I've ever met in my life. She's an amazing editor, she's an incredibly great peer to have here. I will miss her a lot, and I wish her well on her future endeavors, but she's still here, by the way, for another month, or another three weeks or something. So she'll still be here for a little while longer, but I did want to recognize her tonight for incredible contributions to this town, and those are certainly a legacy that I would be very proud of. So we're very happy for Amy and wish her the best. Okay, and last but by no means least, I also want to announce, which we will recognize in later on, the retirement also of Mike Carter, our town plumber, who's, again, a longtime, three-decade-long employee here. Mike has been one of the most professional folks I've ever met since I've been here in this town. Going to be very sad to see him go, but I'm also jealous because I wish I were retiring, too. But really, we'll recognize Mike and Maxine and Mike D'Angelo at another meeting in the future. Does anybody quickly, before I move on to the budget, have any other, have any questions about any of those personnel updates, or, that's good?
Any questions?
Okay.
Sure.
Quickly.
Sure.
Just for the record, so Maxine's retirement, we're not filling her position, is that correct?
That's correct.
That was one of the reductions based on the value of the override.
And, and, that's correct.
Yeah.
So, onto the budget update. The bad news is, is I have gotten word from the Board of Assessors that our new growth total will likely be downgraded. The tax levy will need to be readjusted down. Good news in my mind is, I thought it was going to be a lot worse originally reported in working with the assessors. So we're looking at about, right now, 271,000 and change in less tax levy revenue than what we predicted in the final budget resolution in, I think, August. So that is an issue that's going to have to be corrected before the tax rate hearing on December 3rd. So just also on the flip side, the Board of Assessors are continuing to do their work, and as all of you know from going through the tax rate hearing before, you know, there's always a few more dollars added through the recap over the next couple of months. I do believe that number will be less than what I just reported, but as of right now and what I got just before the meeting, we're looking at about 271,000 less revenue. The issue with the, the revenue is certainly concerning. Nobody wants to make more cuts, we've already gone through enough of this the last two years. But on the flip side, I think what we've talked about many times for the last two or three years, this is a direct result of inflation from three years ago. For all the projects that could have been, residents kind of held on to their money, didn't do an addition, didn't build a pool, didn't do a renovation at home, commercial buildings, also with high interest rates, supply chain problems, inflation froze up, also after the pandemic settled a little bit, banks froze up. Also, as I've said before, and, you know, I'm afraid to say it, but NIMBYism also is a problem here. And why NIMBYism is a problem is because when you have constant lawsuits, when you have constant appeals, when you have constant obstruction of projects, even if they're unfavorable and they don't ever get permitted, it has an impact on new growth. We're seeing that now. The bigger concern for me is taking that new growth in FY '27, '28, and '29, we may be hitting a new low in terms of new growth capturing. Is that all because of resident and a butter concerns about projects? Absolutely not, absolutely not. It is not single-handedly that. But if you look back five years ago at our new growth data in our budget, we had record-breaking amounts of new growth five, four, five, six, seven years ago, and that was when there wasn't really a lot of opposition to housing projects, right? And so at the end of the day, when you go do a four-unit or a five-unit, single-family subdivision, and the planning board scrapes it back to two units instead of five single-family homes, that's it. That hurts. That hurts the revenue for the community, and at some point, if they don't make up that money, we're going to have to make another 271,000 cuts. I don't think anybody, I speak for everybody, nobody wants to do that. I hope that after, you know, the election and entering next year, with an approved master plan, housing production plan, all the plans are ready, we've had a lot of resident feedback, which is fantastic, I think at some point in the next year, the next council and planning board and everybody's going to have to make some ideas and some decisions on exactly how to balance the emotions of this community between no development and development. I've seen a lot of emails recently, you can't do both. You can't vote against overrides, you can't vote against that and then block all development, and somehow that makes it out. I've seen a lot of residents email me, I think they're very confused about this dynamic. The town of Milton blocked MBTA communities, eventually did it, but they also passed a $10 million override. Natick, Needham, Norwood, they can block development, but they also invest in their community. We can also do it the other way. We can also have a little bit more development and maybe have a four-unit subdivision that is proposed without going back to two units, and still make out okay, and still grow, and still not pass tax increases. That's okay, too. But when you have both happening, to Chair Callahan's point earlier about the $2 million cuts to the schools, we are not going to be able to sustain all of what we have, be able to have the high-quality services that we have with both things happening at the same time. So, bad news, revenue's downgraded. Good news, it's not as bad as we thought, and at some point, the community's going to have to go through an exercise of figuring out what the right balance is, because I know we've all heard a tremendous amount of disappointed and upset residents about development, so. And then the last couple of things, through you, Mr. Chairman, just want to announce the police station building project website. You already mentioned the open houses. We had, I think, six people last weekend. I've heard 10 times as many people complain about the police station, but people aren't seemingly going and they're not taking advantage of the open houses. People really need to get engaged and start visiting some of these things. We even had the therapy dogs there, we thought that would be an attraction, and it wasn't, sadly. So, and then just a huge shout out to Megan Aaron at the children's museum, you all will do it, too, but I just am speechless. Amazing job by them, what an amazing facility, and congratulations to their absolutely heroic work. So thank you for that opportunity and the time, Mr. Chairman, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jamie. Okay, moving on, subcommittee reports, and I don't think we have any possibly GATR.
Yeah, GATR met today. No, no big news for us. We did set our executive committee for another year, no major changes in that point. A quick flag, it was sort of flagged again, the state has agreed to make all fixed bus routes fare-free, but microtransit is not fare-free, and so we can have our frustrations with that policy, but also yet another reason to support the return of the fixed bus route, which hopefully we'll be discussing over the next few months.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Frangello. There were no other subcommittees that met over the last couple of weeks, so we'll go to future agenda items. Counselor Sheridan.
Nothing.
Counselor Frangello.
Not at this time.
Counselor Hamblin.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Cormier-Ledger.
Nothing at this time, sir.
Counselor Jones.
No, sir.
Counselor Doyle.
Nothing at this time.
Counselor Comans. Counselor Cormier-Ledger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, thank you to our Franklin Fire Department, Franklin Police Department, and all that participated and attended the memorial service on 9/11. It was very moving, it was incredibly well-done. I thought the Franklin High School musicians did a fantastic job. It's a somber day in our history, but it was very well-done and a great way to honor those that had fallen. I was, I'm sure other people are going to talk about the incredible thing that happened today at the children's museum, but I want to comment how fantastic it is that two women can have an idea and have a passion for something and a vision for something, and ask for community support, and form a nonprofit, raise the money, get community engagement, find the proper space and a landowner that's willing to work with them and see their vision, and then get something to fruition through listening and through doing a ton of community engagement. And seeing the children's museum open today, seeing all those little kids run around, seeing all those corporate sponsors and community people, it truly just reminded me of what Franklin is. It's not something we have to aspire to be, we're already, we're already there, right? We're already this great community that comes together, that thinks outside the box, that supports one another, that gets forgotten a lot, particularly on social media, and particularly with a lot of the angry emails we get about how much change is needed. So kudos to those women and to everybody involved, and I'm really excited. I was also happy to hear that it's $14 for a day pass. So if there's anybody out there that's angry, that just feeling kind of aggravated about town, that hates their life and hates living here so much, come see me, I'll get you a $14 day pass, and you can go to the children's museum and have a great time. And you can play in those exhibits and look at all that fun stuff and see all those happy kids, and maybe you'll cheer up, just for a day, but that's worth it to me. I'll cover the 14 bucks, or go to the library and get a free pass. But we have to start focusing on the positive and find a way to be happy again, because we're spiraling out of control with all of this negative stuff, and it's going to tear us apart. No matter who is up here, no matter what nine people are up here come November, we're going to die as a community if we don't find a way to figure out and how to come together. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Cormier-Ledger, Counselor Sheridan.
Yeah, just like the second about the children's museum, and that's great news about the history museum. Congratulations to Amy, good luck. You forgot to mention the new logo, too.
Yes, I did.
Yeah. And I agree with Ted about the negativity, but unfortunately, I think it's kind of a national thing or international thing at this point.
Yeah, that's what I just said, yeah.
Really bad. So, I'm back, I'm kind of glad I'm back to school, so I'm not watching CNN as much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sheridan. Counselor Frangello.
Counsel office hours tomorrow morning. Yeah, I mean, massive congratulations and gratitude and pride around the children's museum. A huge thank you to Amy, I think you've been a fantastic addition in your time here and have been, yeah, well above and beyond what we would have expected of a deputy town administrator, and got involved in a whole bunch of ways, initiated a bunch of innovative projects, so you'll definitely be missed. Excited to hear about new personnel, that's exciting. And then, yeah, and then like really, really concerned about the, or the overestimate of new growth and a sort of continued trend of slowing new growth. Yeah, really concerned about the long-term fiscal health of a community that doesn't recognize where we need to welcome new growth on existing infrastructure in a way that's cash-positive in the long term for the town. So, hope it can be somewhat of a wake-up call, that you can't, you can't say no to everything and still have a vibrant community.
Thank you, Counselor Frangello. Counselor Hamblin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through the chair. I'd like to echo Counselor Frangello's words about the new growth. It's scary to me as well, it's kind of predictable. You can see people just backing away because they don't even want to take the time to, you know, put in, put in any time because they're going to waste it. So it is very, it's not a good thing. And, and also about the new, new people, that's very exciting. Thank you, Marina. Okay. Yeah, you got it right. And, and, and congratulations to Kevin, and there's just so many changes going on, I don't think I can say it all, but all the people that are leaving. Amy, I'm really going to miss you. Not only, we forgot to, Jamie forgot to mention the logo, but also the new website, and I predict that Frank, the town of Franklin will be getting the awards at Connect 351 this, this year because of them, because I keep voting for them all the time.
Thanks, sir.
I'm already, I'm already like, as soon as the nominations came out, I'm like, town of Franklin. And, but it's been really special to work with you, and I want to thank you, working with the Economic Development Committee and everything else you've done, it's been really special. Even in Houston today, we talked about our pharmacy with the group and how, how they're still trying to get that organized and figure it out, and I really thank you for your help with them. And, and, you know, the children's museum, it was amazing, all of the people that showed up from the community to be there to celebrate, like, I don't know if you, like, I got, they asked me to give like a minute speech, and that's, you know that's impossible for me, and so, but it's just amazing to look out at that sea of people and think like, like, how did we get here? Everybody had to be in the right place at the right time, and everybody's working so hard, and then you get this like amazing, amazing thing that happens, and that's what we focus on, right? That's the good stuff, we have to enjoy that, and like, maybe we can have a night at the museum or something like that. I think they already have, like, people want to do overnights there, overnight parties and stuff like that. But, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Hamblin. Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll keep mine brief, since much of what needs to be said has been said by my wonderful counselors. I do want to thank Amy. Amy, you know, Amy, Jamie needs an anchor, kind of help every so often, someone to kind of balance things out, and you've been at that balance.
Punch every once in a while, too.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, we actually have never taken off Jamie's coat to see how many bruises are actually on his, on his arms from the times. That I'm sure Amy probably gave him a few wallops. But that's great, that's, 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 you both have such a wonderful relationship that you've built since you've come here. I truly appreciate everything that you've done for our community. I think some of the most obvious things were mentioned tonight by my fellow counselors, but you really came in at a time where we were in some serious need, and you've done a great job in your position. You're going to be missed. Congratulations on your marriage, and congratulations on getting out of Dodge and heading down to the Cape and enjoying some peace. I'm sure it's going to be a great place to be. On another note, everything's been said about the museum, I ran a little late because I had to, I had my students today, but boy, what an event, just an absolutely amazing thing to see. I think one of the things that I wanted to mention, there are so many different people to mention in regards to the museum, obviously Erin and Megan, who were keen parts of the master plan when they were on the master plan with us, but, you know, the museum is actually the old Agway, who Mel was kindly, a big part of helping them move the plans forward with a lot of help from Brad Chaffee and a lot of other key individuals, who are, there are numerous to mention, but I just wanted to throw kudos out to some really key people who helped make this move forward. The town of Franklin, on a positive note, not doom and gloom, kind of like what we've been hearing, even though we might be having some challenges, especially with new growth, there are a lot of good prospects. The town of Franklin isn't going to become, as some, some, some people so eloquently call it, Framingham. Well, not Framingham, first of all, it's an insult to Framingham. Framingham's a nice place, my sister went there to school. But we are on a positive path for many reasons. One is, we are the town of Franklin. We have so many things to offer here. Next year alone, 2026, and Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy specifically, 2026 World Cup is coming to our area. We have some economic development work to really start laying the groundwork for in order to help make the town of Franklin really what it can be in the future. I see a lot of dollars and signs next year, on top of the fact that the state of Massachusetts has a 250th birthday. There are so many positive things coming up the pike, and now with, with this rezoning that we talked about, and with the museum in this neighborhood, there's, and with, of course, us the purchasing of the, the train tracks, all I see are positives. If people want to spend so much time thinking about the negatives and the few that there are, hey, that's on you. There are so many positives in this town that we have to There are so many positives in this town that we have to look forward to and I am truly looking forward to them. Mr. Chairman, thank you for the time, time being 9:10.
I pass the ball to yous.
You call that short?
Oh, please.
Jesus Christ.
Counselor, no, no.
I'm not the one that put all this stuff on the agenda, that was you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Talk about the World Cup, have your daughter getting married in Sharon on June 5th and try to get hotel rooms.
Oh. Nope.
Well, I did get them, but they were in Blue Hills, but. Did get them, but. They're, they're charging $1,000 a night around Norwood and that area, yeah, $1,000 bucks a night they want.
Hotel tax.
I know.
Ching.
I know. That'd be great, you know, but unfortunately, I could not make the Children's Museum because I called Tommy and I was in traffic coming home. But one good thing was that it was, they were on WBG. I had WBG on because I was, I was listening to traffic. And I said, that's awesome that there was, they were, they gave Franklin a great shout-out. Shout-out about being the first, you know, they, they were at Children's Museum and they were doing a great thing, so I thought.
I was talking to him at the time.
I was.
I said, shut up, I'm listening to WBG.
I said, Tommy, I am too.
Good, that's good.
But that was pretty cool to, to hear that. But Amy, congratulations. I was down there this weekend, it's pretty nice down there, you know, so I was. I will, I will. I was with a few of your friends too. So, but congratulations and I'm really happy for you and hope everything works out, but everything else has been said, so I'm good.
Thank you. And I will echo all my fellow counselor comments. I do want to just emphasize a few, first being the 9/11 ceremony that the Fire Department does annually. Folks, if you have the time on 9/11, come and see that memorial ceremony. They do it outside in front of the fire station downtown, chairs are out there. It's just a really nice memorial to remember all the lives that were lost on 9/11. So please, next year, in future years, please try and come to that. Children's Museum, again, just another, kudos to Megan Aaron, they did a magnificent job in their entire staff and board that were able to bring that to fruition. But it's just another thing, another good thing, really good thing going on in our community. And we need to be celebrating those good things because there are a very lot of good things going on.
Absolutely.
And we need to celebrate them. The retirements, you know, Mike and Maxine, been here a long time. I've had the opportunity to work with Mike on half a dozen, many municipal projects. And I will say the same thing that Jamie said, in that when it came to construction, there was nobody, at municipal construction, there was nobody better than Mike D'Angelo when I'd worked with him, but he was certainly the best when it came to construction. And Maxine, again, she could write a book, maybe there's a lot of people, she shouldn't, but then. But she certainly could write a book after 30 years in municipal government. And Amy, just can't, you did to what everybody said, you came in at a time when we needed help, Jamie needed help, our administrative team needed help, and you were there and you really took us to the next level. And I can't thank you enough for everything that you've done for our great community and wish you the very best and good luck in Yarmouth. Okay, with that, we do have a need and for an executive session, exemption number two, contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator, and we will not come back to open session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for exemption number two, contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator, to not return to regular session.
Second.
Motion in the second. Roll call, vote, clerk will call today.
Roll, roll. Whatever. I put it away on any one.
I think you know the pink.
I know, I gotta pull up the papers and like this stuff anyways, so. All right. Cormier-Ledger?
Yes.
Sheridan?
Yes.
Frangello?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Jones, yes, vice chair.
Yes.